Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. With Carmela Vitale absent excuse, please rise for pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion for the executive minutes of March 13th, 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of March 13th, 2017.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome all, and hopefully welcome to spring. Fingers crossed. If it's not here, don't blame me. I shouldn't have brought it up. Just a few things before I come down for a couple of proclamations, and some of these may also be echoed by others in the room here. A week ago today, we had a tremendous Taste of Madison. The food was incredible as always, and it was a great showcase of all the great restaurants we have in Madison. So if you missed the Taste of Madison, you can do your own on any day of the week by stopping by at all our great restaurants. Also last Monday was International Day of Happiness, part of our Paint the Town Yellow, trying to bring an outlook of optimism and also to bring awareness to mental health. And I went to the second grade Kings Road School with my rotary hat on to read to them for Literacy Month, and three-quarters of the class that I was reading to were all wearing yellow. So it was very impressive to see them dressed up in their yellow. And then also last week, I went down to Edison to Junior Achievement to swear in the mayor of New Jersey BizTown for Central Avenue School. This is a program, very impressive that Junior Achievement does. They have a little town, and the students learn about businesses, how to run businesses, how to deal with credit, and all sorts of things. And so it was great to be able to give the oath of office to the mayor, and tomorrow I will be giving the oath of office to the Kings Road Mayor of BizTown. And, you know, some of the businesses they were assigned to include some right here in Madison, Investors Bank, Quest Diagnostics, and of course, Town Hall. And I talked to one of the parents over the weekend and said, some of the feedback they got from the students was, "I don't think I ever want to be a CEO." So it was worthwhile. And then last week, we had the Brownie Troop 6272 come and visit to learn about municipal government. And as they do, we give them a tour of the Borough Hall, and then they came in here and learned about how the council works. They got to become council members, mayor, attorney, administrator, clerk. And they passed a new law for Madison. They even asked if it actually would count. But it was very interesting that the system does work. The law that was proposed was making every Tuesday Ice Cream Tuesday in Madison. It passed on a 4-2 vote, but the mayor then vetoed it. And it was reintroduced with only the first Tuesday of every month, and that one passed and was signed into law by the mayor. So go enjoy ice cream next Tuesday. And they really did learn a lot. And a reminder that next Monday, we have advertised meeting for the Borough Council. The committee that has volunteered to put actions behind the words of a welcoming community will be meeting. No official action will be taken, but they'll be putting together some ideas of how we can be a welcoming community. And I've got some proclamations to do, so may head on down. I think we have members of the Thursday Morning Club here. Please come on forward. Peach Bolton, Eleanor Flanagan, Jeanne Kazakowski, Judy Mauteon, Jerry Mir, Susan Packey, Carol Schessler, Judy Sobko, and anyone else, come on forward.
I should be up there with you.
Michael, come on up.
I will.
Maureen, another member. Yeah, anyone else, come and join us. A very important proclamation, and I applaud you for taking on this clause. This is for Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2017. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well being our most vulnerable assets, and whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development, and whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility reflecting both the current and future quality of life in the community, and whereas communities that provide parents with social support, knowledge of parenting, child development, concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children to ensure all children grow to their full potential, and whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, and whereas the Thursday Morning Club will be planting pinwheels for prevention around the town to educate the community about ensuring great childhoods. Now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Borough Madison, on behalf of the governing body, do hereby proclaim April 2017 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and urge our citizens to become involved in efforts to support the families and to strengthen communities. Thank you so much for your work. Who wants to hold?
Carol, thank you. Would you like to make a? Yes. Thursday Morning Club is a member of the New Jersey Federation of Women's Clubs and General Federation of Women's Clubs, and every two years we get a new project, one that we all vote on as members. There are over 7,000 members in the state. And for this year and next year, we chose this project, and we're very excited about it because it's about preventing child abuse. So we're trying to help the people before issues develop, and it's through education of the children and education of the parents. And then we as clubs get involved by donating books, donating clothing, donating money so that programs can be put on for the people. And so this month, there'll be publicity in the paper, along with our pinwheels all over town, just to let you know more and more of what we're doing. And I thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you for all your work again. Mike Fitzpatrick here. I know Marlene is here.
They're both here.
They're both here. There we go. Come on up. National Public Health Week, April 3rd to 9th. Whereas since 1995, the American Public Health Association, APHA, through its sponsorship of National Public Health Week demonstrates the ongoing education of public policymakers and public health professionals about issues relevant to improving the public's health. And whereas during the first full week of April each year, APHA brings together communities across the United States to observe National Public Health Week as time to recognize the contributions of public health to populations served and to highlight issues that are important to improving the health of our nation. And whereas some of the greatest achievements of public health include immunizing population against diseases, identifying and controlling infectious diseases, preparing for public health emergencies, improving the health for those in need, including women and children, providing information for safer and healthier foods, implementing occupational health safety measures, and promoting healthy behaviors, including increased physical activity, good nutrition, and tobacco prevention and cessation. And whereas, public health is a foundation for a brighter tomorrow, and investing in safety and the well-being of all Americans enriches our communities, bolsters our economy, and strengthens our nation. Now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Borough Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby proclaim the week of April 3rd through 9th as National Public Health Week and call upon the people of Madison to observe this week by helping our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders better understand the value of public health and supporting great opportunities to adopt healthy, help adopt preventative lifestyle habits. Thank you for all your work.
I'd like to say.
Mayor and council members, thank you very much for your support in allowing this proclamation to go forward, and on behalf of the staff here in the Madison Health Department, we appreciate the support of the community and look forward to continuing providing excellent service to Madison's residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. There you go. And just as a reminder, we also provide health service for other, many other communities, so it's not just Madison that benefits from the hard work. Thank you for all you do. We'll get to Public Works and Engineering shortly, so public safety. Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Madison Police Department, during the past week, Madison has once again been named as being one of the top 50 safest cities in New Jersey. Madison was ranked number 27 out of the top 50. This ranking is a direct result of the hard work by the officers of Madison Police Department. The Madison Police Department and the Morris County Sheriff's Office are warning residents about phone scams, demanding green dot cards to satisfy outstanding warrants. Residents are receiving phone calls from a person identifying himself as Sergeant Jackson, badge number 3319 of the Morris County Sheriff's Office. He informs the residents that they have an active bench warrant. While staying on the phone with him, he then instructs them to purchase green dot cards, which are prepaid credit cards in specific amounts, and bring them to 560 West Hanover Avenue in Morris Township, New Jersey. Both departments want the public to be aware that these calls are a scam, and residents should notify their local authorities should they ever receive one of these calls. It should be noted, this scam has been around for the last three years. Sheriff James Gannon said, and I'll quote, "For the safety of all citizens, any warrant-related transactions should go through the Morris Sussex Visonage Probation Services Division. Residents should be aware that warrant detectives do not accept any payments from citizens." In regards to crime prevention, they provide the following tips. Be suspicious of calls who demand immediate payment for any reason. Remember that anyone who has a number on a green dot money pack card has access to the funds on the card. Never give out personal or financial information to anyone who emails or calls you unsolicited. Never wire money, provide debit or credit card numbers or green dot money pack card numbers to someone you do not know. Okay? And from the Madison Fire Department, on Tuesday, March 14th, at approximately 2:10 a.m., the fire department gave mutual aid, along with other Morris County fire departments, to the Chatham Fire Department at the scene of a residential structure fire on Center Avenue. The fire occurred at about, occurred about at, the fire occurred about at two hours into the snowstorm that occurred that day. There were no injuries. Fire units were back in service by 4:45 a.m. The home was uninhabitable after the fire. During the snowstorm event, the fire department responded to three fire calls and two EMS calls. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Line Anson Borough Clerk, Ms. Bailey.
Mayor, from the Clerk's Office, in anticipation of the June 6 primary election, filing deadline for nomination petitions for municipal office is April 3rd, 2017. Forms are available in the Borough Clerk's Office, and voter registration forms, as well as mail and ballot applications, are also available in the Borough Clerk's Office or online at morriselections.org.
Hold it. Pull the microphone a little bit closer to you.
Oh, sorry. Oh, thank you. Late night voter registration for the June primary election is May 16th. Last day to register to be eligible to vote in June primary, and the Clerk's Office will be open until 8:00 p.m. that night. And then from the CFO, the introduced budget documents were sent to the state Wednesday after the council meeting. A copy of the budget document is available in the Clerk's Office and at the library. The budget hearing is scheduled for Wednesday, April 12th. We encourage all residents to review the budget and come and attend the meeting on April 12th. The Audit Committee has tentatively set a date to meet on April 24th. The council liaisons, the CFO, the administrator, and the auditor will all meet. This is an important meeting where we will be discussing the upcoming audit and reviewing certain internal controls. CFO and utility billing staff have been busy working with the billing software company on implementation of the electric dividend. They should complete testing next week and will be ready to start distributing the $1.5 million dividend on May 1st. CFO will be working out the details and will forward that to the council before our next meeting. The payroll department will be shifting to a new payroll processing company at the end of the current pay cycle, and the administration has been working with the department heads and staff on implementing biometric time clocks at all borough buildings. This will help reduce paperwork and make payroll processing more efficient, and it could save the borough close to $15,000 in annual fees. That is it from us. Thank you.
Thank you. Utilities, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. Beginning with the Water Department, we continue to have ongoing testing of the drinking water in town. There were an outsized number of requests for locating and marking underground utilities. There were 45. Seems much higher than usual. A hydrant was replaced at Carrigan Lane, and in addition, there was an inspection of the water service layouts at St. Vincent de Martyr and Ridgedale Avenue. And finally, the group attended some safety training. Turning to the electric utility, they completed installation of cable and cameras for video surveillance system at both substations. They installed new poles at Sherwood Road and Luanica Way, performed battery maintenance at both substations, and then did the usual maintenance of streetlight repairs, service upgrades, and mark-out requests. I'd also like to mention that the Utility Advisory Committee will be meeting Wednesday, April 5th, at 7:00 p.m. in this building. And as Councilwoman Bailey reported, the utility building department's working out the logistics to implement the $1.5 million electric utility dividend. This will include a small change to the format of the bill so residents can clearly identify the dividend. One of the projects this committee is undertaking and will be working on in the coming months is a more complete redesign of the bill form. The goal is to have a new, more user-friendly form in place by the end of the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. And with health and Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Marisol. With Public Works, I have an abbreviated version. First, we have the, the Public Works Department is working with the soccer club and the parents on a partnership in repairing Rosedale Field. Second, they are working with the engineering department to get the storm inlets and roads ready for the paving that's going to occur this spring and summer. And last, they've been, they've so far completed 11 tons worth of pothole patching in the past few weeks, so hopefully our roads are getting in better shape. And for the Health Department, our nursing supervisor has scheduled the annual men's cancer screening clinic for Monday, June 5th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The women's screening is Monday, May 22nd, at 10:00 a.m. And the blood screening clinic is going to be Thursday, June 1st, beginning at 7:30 a.m. These clinics are open to all the residents of Madison and the contracting communities. If you're over the age of 18, sign-up dates will be advertised on Rosenet and in our newspapers. The third and final notices for delinquent 2017 pet licensing renewals are being mailed out this week. There's an April 15th deadline. After that, violations, and in parenthesis, they wrote summonses. And finally, our health educator has become active with the local organizations. This includes MASA, MCC, the Madison-Chatham Coalition, and Mayor's Wellness Campaign. Today, Madison High School held its Every 15 Minutes program. It's designed to make students and parents aware of the dangers of drinking and driving. Through MASA, finances and volunteer resources were donated to this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. And Community Affairs, Ms. Byrne.
From the Senior Center, the Madison Senior Center is in the unusual position of picking up the phone and hearing "I saw you on TV." Apparently, the video from the January TCAP Day is currently airing on cable in northern and central New Jersey, and viewers are requesting the cap pattern. The caps are very much appreciated by patients at the Carol Simon Cancer Center, and they are happy to help publicize this worthwhile project. Tom DiDonato will let us know when the program airs in the Madison area. Oklahoma was the annual spring musical offered by Madison High School. Their long tradition of inviting seniors to a free dinner and dress rehearsal performance dates back to 2003, and the high school staff and students do a wonderful job as hosts and performers. Over 100 Madison seniors attended the show. The AARP tax volunteers have been hard at work every Wednesday assisting area residents with their income tax filings. The new IRS software requires more time to complete, and appointments are therefore scheduled at 9:00, 11:00, and 1:00 to accommodate the extra work. Regular volunteers Alan Barton, Mike Moore, Bill List, Nancy Wong, Brenda Meda, and Robert Auerbach are joined by new volunteers Bill Rice, Jim Gallagher, and Howard Lerner. The Friends will host their annual spring luncheon on April 19th in recognition of these volunteers. And then a combined report from the DDC and the Chamber. The Taste of Madison was held on Monday. It was a great success. Final numbers will be available shortly. The Second Annual Prison Ball Tournament was held this past Saturday, March 25th, at Drew University. The event was organized by Drew, the Madison PBA Local 92, and the DDC. A great time was held by all participants, and the proceeds will be given to a local veterans organization. It's not too soon to think about Easter. The annual Chamber Easter Egg Fun Fest is scheduled for April 8th, from 11:00 to 12:30. Cleaners Advantage and Whole Foods Markets will once again sponsor the event. The Home Show, the annual Home Show, is scheduled for April 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 at the Madison Junior School. The change in location will provide more space and Main Street exposure. Independent Bookstore Day and International Tabletop Day, a new event for Madison, is planned for Saturday, April 29th, organized by Short Stories and promoted by the DDC. Independent Bookstore Day and International Tabletop Day will be celebrated bringing families, readers, and gamers to downtown Madison. They're going to be setting up tables and chairs in front of the museum and bringing out Monopoly, and Sorry, and Go, so if you're good at those games, put April 29th on your calendar. May Day is scheduled for Saturday, May 6th. T-shirt sponsorships are being accepted until Monday, April 3rd. The t-shirt art contest winner will be announced this week. Volunteers for the May Day cleanup are always welcome and can sign up by emailing ddc@rosenet.org. The Madison Chamber of Commerce Annual Awards Dinner is scheduled for Monday, June 5th, at the Madison Hotel. And last but not least, and I find this hard to believe, the Madison Farmers Market opening day is Thursday, June 1st. The Madison Farmers Market is preparing for its 25th season. The market, which is located on Central between Main Street and Cook Avenue, will run from June 1st to Thursday, October 26th. This means the market has been extended by two weeks this year. Market hours remain 2 to 7, and we are looking forward to another great season. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, on to Communications and Petitions.
None received, Mayor.
All right. Now we're on to the first of two invitations for discussion. This is the one that has limitations on items to be discussed. It is limited to things on the agenda listed under 13, which is the Go-Go Grandparent, Affordable Senior Transportation, or you may comment on resolutions on the consent agenda for tonight, and that's Resolution 110 through Resolution 120. So if you want to comment on any of those items, step up, state your name, your address, the topic, either the Go-Go Grandparent or the resolution you want to comment on, and then try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. We will have another comment period where you may comment on anything. Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm John Crowdhammerl. I'm president of Trittown 55+ who's sponsoring the Go-Go Grandparent project. This is Laura Sustak, who's our...
Are you here for the, to do the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, hold up a...
All right.
Yep. So, so you're actually on the agenda as opposed to the residents that want to comment anything. Any residents want to comment either on that agenda item or any resolutions? Seeing that, I close this part of the meeting and move on to our agenda discussion, Go-Go Grandparent. So you're on.
I'll start again. I'm John Crowdhammerl, and president of Trittown 55+, who's sponsoring the Senior Rides Project. This is Laura Sustak, who's our...
Communicator, marketing person, trying to get spread, help to spread the word about Go-Go Grandparent and Trittown Coalition as a whole.
So we thought it would be a good idea to come back to council again after our, after our first presentation several months ago, to bring you up to date on the, on the project. Starting, we've been out to the different senior locations in the three towns. The two senior centers, we've been to Chateau Thierry, I think I'm pronouncing that right. We gave presentations to them, and we've been to the Y. In fact, we're at the Y today. We're going to be at the Y on Wednesday and at the Y on Friday when the senior classes are being done, and we give out the literature. I've given Elizabeth the, some of, some copies that you have. These are some of the, the literature that we're handing out. We also have a, an oval magnet for the refrigerators that were given to the seniors. Basically, the project is anyone in the three towns who are 65 and over can sign up with Go-Go Grandparent through our website, or you can call their 800 number, register for rides, and they use Uber and Lyft. But the advantage here is that the seniors don't have to have a cellphone. They don't have to have a smartphone. They just have to be able to call the 800 number of Go-Go Grandparent. Now, Go-Go Grandparent was begun last January 2016 by a young entrepreneur in San Diego whose mother, who lived in Arizona, no longer drove. He didn't have a cellphone, no smartphone, so he developed this idea, this company, that is the interface with, with Uber and Lyft, to provide seniors this service where they can, which is better than Uber and Lyft, in that they can reserve in advance all of their appointments, and they operate 24/7. So the object that we want to do is when seniors lose their driving privileges, they become more and more isolated. So besides getting to all of their medical appointments and errands during the day, we want them to get out at night and have fun, go to the restaurants on Main Street. Part of our project is that, is there's a 15-mile radius from where they live, which takes into account everything from Morris Town to West Orange, okay? And it takes in all three hospitals, it takes in all of the Atlantic Health and Summit Medical Facilities. We just want to get the seniors out and about and socializing and having more fun and getting them from not being isolated. And the project is that we are subsidizing, Trittown is subsidizing with Go-Go Grandparent. Within the 15-mile radius, the rider will pay $5 each way. The average cost according to Go-Go Grandparent is $19. The senior pays $5, and we subsidize the rest. And this project is going to start on April 3rd and go until June 30th, just to assess whatever bugs are in the system and, and assess how many use it, and we're hoping that we're going to continue it.
Thank you.
Have any questions, we'll be around, and if there's anybody here who would like us to give a presentation to their group, we'd be glad to do it. So if the Thursday Morning Club would like it, we'd be glad to come and, and give you that presentation, okay?
And I see from your FAQ sheet that, for those that'll be watching this at home later on, the 800 number is 855-464-6872. That was 855-464-6872. Any questions from the council? I did see, we normally don't take questions on presentations, but Terry, just a second. Just one second, Terry. Got to get the council first, okay? And then I'll...
Ben?
Thank you. Is, curious...
Curious as to the cost of the service after the three-month period. Are you...
We only said the three-month period just so we can get a quantitative assessment. Who's using it? Is it popular with the seniors? We fully intend to continue it.
At the subsidized price?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I forgot is April 3rd, we're having a kickoff tea at the Drip here in Madison. You all are invited. It's from 2:00 to 3:00. And just to kick off the rides and get publicity and, you know, the local papers will be here. That was April 3rd, 2:00 to 3:00 at Drip.
Yeah.
And we just really want to make sure that we spread the word and, you know, let key members of the community know so that they can identify users and seniors who really could use the service. And it's so far in our presentations to the local, especially Chateau Thierry, it was very well received and the people really are looking forward to it. And again, it's to supplement what already exists with a little bit more flexibility for them to use when they want it and where they want to go.
Okay, Pat, and then Maureen?
Yeah, thank you very much. It's very interesting and could be a great thing for our seniors. Will we be getting a report when you're completed the initial...
Sure.
...or so? Okay. Thank you.
Also, our business committee is working with the DDC and the Chatham, I mean, the Chamber of Commerce, because if we get seniors out and about, that's more business downtown. So we're working to develop programs with the business community to also get more business in the downtown area.
Great, thank you. Maureen?
Now, I understand this model, is it, how, they pay, seniors pay for the ride by setting up an account?
Yes.
That they draw down from?
Yes.
So...
They take a credit card.
With a credit card. So if my mother lived in Madison, I could set up an account for her?
And part of the signup, yes, she set up her account with a credit card, and one of the good things about it is if your mother, if you want to be part of that, you can sign up as a caregiver and when, and you will be texted and emailed when that person is being picked up and dropped off and returned home through Go-Go Grandparent. They're nationwide, they have many customers here in New Jersey. I mean, if you, what we're telling people at the Y, we've met many people who don't live in our three towns, where we say, "You can set up your own account, it just won't be subsidized."
Bob? Just a quick question. Is this a private car that comes to pick up one individual or will you be pulling people together?
It's Uber and Lyft. If you, if you, one person can call and you will be picked up individually, or as we tell, told the people at the Chateau Thierry, if four of them want to go out to the restaurants, it's $5 because it's one ride.
By choice. If you choose to have someone that you want to ride with, it's by choice. Otherwise, it's an individual ride.
If the senior wants to take their grandchild or their kids out to the restaurant or for on Ice Cream Tuesday, it's still $5 because the senior is the one that is being, that has the credit card.
And I do just want to also add that Trittown Coalition has really, truly been a partnership...
Trittown has really been a partnership of various members of the community. John Hoover has been working with us for the Age Friendly Businesses Initiative, Edna and the seniors at the Senior Center. Edna has been a valuable member to our coalition in making this, you know, this is our first initiative and we are very excited about it, and it really is a true partnership of collaboration and input from everybody involved in, you know, in communicating these services to the community and whatnot. And going forward, the Age Friendly Business is really something we want to focus on and help bring the community to this downtown, for sure.
Okay, we'll take questions from the audience. Couple guidelines, we do need you to step up to the microphone, state your name and address, and ask the question. Come on up. Yep, Terry.
Terry Romano, West Lane, Madison. I may have answered the questions. Is it just for the senior or can they bring someone with them? A caregiver, a grandchild?
It's, yes, they can bring a child, they can bring a caregiver, but the senior signs up and they can bring whoever they want in the car, and it's still $5.
And caregivers can sign up their parent. If you have an elder parent that would need the service and you want to be in charge of registering them and using your credit card, you can do that as well. You can also monitor the rides. Go-Go Grandparent will let you know that your parent has been picked up at a certain time and brought to their location, so that is also an aspect of the Go-Go Grandparent that you would not have with normal Uber service.
Any other questions from the audience? Thank you. We're looking forward to a great, successful program. This is, as you said, help not only the seniors but the downtown and all the businesses. We move on to 14 ordinances for hearing. The clerk, please read the statement.
The ordinance is scheduled for hearing. Were introduced by title and passed on a first reading at the regular meeting of the council held Monday, March 13th, 2017. They were posted and filed according to law and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call it ordinances for second reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 11, 2017, calendar year 2017, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
I open the hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on this ordinance, please step forward, state your name or address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 11-2017.
I second it.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 11-2017 adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 12, 2017, ordinance of the borough of Madison amending Chapter 190 of the Borough Code entitled Water to change the billing method for residential water meters.
Before I open here, and I just want to alert the public that there will be a motion to table this ordinance, not to stop it from moving forward, but it needs some more work so it will be manageable for both the borough and our residents. But that said, we had advertised a hearing, so I open the hearing for ordinance 12, 2017. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move to table ordinance 12-2017.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reposed, that will be tabled and brought back later or reintroduced if there's major changes. All right, now we're on the second of the invitations for discussion. This is when you may comment on any topic. Again, same guidelines are in place. Please step up, state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard, and try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kathy Daly, 20 West End Avenue. I actually have a prepared statement and Terry has some copies of it that she can hand out to each of you. I've come to share a few thoughts with you about the welcoming community resolution passed in February. The resolution was, I feel, a departure from the council's usual good judgment. From a fiscal management perspective, it was a reckless action. Have you considered, for example, the strain that this may place on the borough's infrastructure and resources in the coming months and years? Is the Health Department ready to handle an increased number of health screenings and to conduct more challenging immunization audits in our local schools? Is our present school district prepared for a possible influx of students from various countries who may not speak English and who may require additional ESL resources? Immigrant students may also need assistance with remedial studies due to interruptions in their school attendance or cultural, educational differences. Is the school district prepared to fund those additional special ed teachers? Immigrant children often face difficult familial situations that necessitate immigration in the first place and may require counseling or psychiatric services in school as well. Are the schools and taxpayers prepared for those increased costs? When rental properties house too many people, the odds that a fire will break out increase. Is our present fire department ready to respond to an increased number of fires that are caused by overcrowded living conditions, such as the recent fire in the center of Madison and the devastating fire in downtown Summit in 2010? Is our present Madison Police Department ready to deal with undocumented criminals who may now view our borough as an ideal central location to hide out and evade deportation? Are current Madison residents ready for their children's class sizes to increase overnight potentially and the teacher's attention to be directed increasingly toward undocumented students from foreign countries? I agree with your statements that Madison has been a welcoming community since its founding. I'm also confident that it will continue to have a warm and welcoming character in the future. I am just concerned that we may have unwittingly, or that we may unwittingly, commit to more than our taxpayers can afford. Thank you all.
Thank you for sharing your comments. As mentioned at the start, next week, there'll be beginning of conversations of what the actions are behind a welcoming community resolution, but to be very clear, this does not change any of the quality of life laws, regulations that are already in place, such as stacking of apartments, the certain level of, I think it's felony and above, if a, any, anyone arrested for a felony or above has to provide documentation. All those laws will stay in place as they have been in place for years before, so, and I think a lot of the other questions will be answered as time moves forward.
I'm sorry, I was having an office conversation over here. I'm sorry, was that a public invitation to, this is a public meeting, correct?
Right, it is a public, so you can participate. If, I do request, not, it's not required, but if you want to be part of the breakout groups, it'd be, I appreciate to send email to mayor@rosenet.org, your interest, and I'll make sure that you are part of the discussions, as I've said to some that have been, you know, both very supportive of the welcome resolution and those that were not comfortable with it. We can only move forward if all the voices are heard, so your input would be greatly...
Thank you, I do appreciate that. I did notice, when I watched the recording, unfortunately, I was not available to attend the meeting, but I did notice that many of the people who did speak on the evening that it was presented were not, in fact, Madison residents. And many, even if they were in Madison, for instance, Drew students are not Madison taxpayers. So I was aware of that and I will appreciate being part of things moving forward.
Thank you. We'll see you next week. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Yes, sir.
My name is John Dew. I live at 25 Hillcrest Road. I know several of you people here, so anyway, my turn to say something, so I will. When I first moved to Madison, I came here because I really did a good search. We had five days to look around, and I'll tell you, this, this community was the best I could see in New Jersey to raise my family. Had good stats as far as police stats. It wasn't located over a hazardous waste dump or anything like that, like typical Jersey, right? So I was very happy to be able to come here and afford to live here, and so I was able to come here with my family. One thing, though, I think this, I have a problem with this welcoming community situation in that I think more people should have been notified or we should have discussed it as a community before it was voted upon by you. So I also want to bring up things from, to the EMS standpoint. I'm a volunteer EMT, but I know, you know, we take people in, they're very, usually pretty agreeable, the immigrants we pick up. However, sometimes they carry different diseases that we're used to, as far as a lot of people are taken care of, as far as TB and things in this country, but I understand now in places in the Midwest, people are brought in in the heat of the night and they've got all kinds of diseases and sort of dumped off in the middle of the night, and they've got to go find a place to stay. In the old days, we used to have sponsors, okay? Sponsors knew who they were. You could go to those people, you know, to find out what's going on, they were taken well cared of. But then you have situations here, like maybe there is stacking in this town. We just had a fire. I heard two rumors that there were like extra mattresses left behind, and it probably wasn't because it was a slumber party or a family reunion. So that hasn't come out yet, but the insurance people are going to know, and maybe our insurance rates for buildings in town are going to go up if we don't have a very strong enforcement of the codes here. And I'm looking at like the possibility of a policeman or a fireman getting hurt because, okay, you start a fire and got to go in and take care of it. What if a fireman dies because of something that these people who are not very well schooled in using our electrical facilities here, and they maybe got multiple plugs in a plug or something like that, and maybe it was caused by that? But what about the guy who had a house next door or a building next door? He's going to get damaged and the rates are going to go up if we do have stacking here, but they're going to know. Okay, as our hospitals, we take people to hospitals as an EMT. All of a sudden, we've got these mini rooms going in the front. You go in the emergency ward and they've got these ad hoc little places, which I never saw before. So apparently, there's a lot of extra people coming into that hospital. And when we pick up somebody in town, we're on one shift. We pick you up, we take the first one who calls, and some, you could be living here for a long time, you're having a heart attack, and what, you know, it doesn't matter who it is, we pick them up. But, you know, you're going to feel a little bit off, maybe if somebody got picked up and they had something minor wrong with them and they were an illegal alien. Normally, these people don't have much wrong with them, but if you open it up and say this is a welcoming committee, well then, maybe they're not going to be hesitant to go in over there for a cold or a temperature or something like that, like they are now. I understand the jails are filled up with a lot of illegal immigrants in our nation and in our country. As far as extra funding, I don't know if we got any extra funding for declaring ourselves a welcoming committee, but maybe that would help if we did because we know we have extra people going to our schools now that we didn't have before, and nobody's asking any questions. I don't see anybody violating anybody's rights as far as stomping into their residence in the middle of the night and taking them away, but I would think if we're going to have extra people in here, the taxes are going to rise, and we were told this year that they're going to rise a little bit, right? Always there's a little bit, right? But these little bits keep adding up. Now, why do we have to welcome people if they're already here? And I do think they're here already. So why do we have to open it up and make people casual about being here? I think we look at this as too casually a situation. I know, I look at this thing, fair and welcoming committees put out by this, what, Wind of the Spirit, and they've got all these groups here signed up. I don't know if they threatened us if we didn't come out with this particular declaration. They probably have all kinds of pro bono lawyers, but, you know, we could probably come up with some lawyers in this town, too. There's a lot of them, I'm sure. So anyway, I'm going to make sure I'm here next week, and I'm just disappointed because I think the quality of life is going to be falling here. I know I sold a house in Chatham. Chatham's number one in their schools over there, at least their high school, I think it was. Sold that house in three days, okay? Over here, we're 25th. I don't see why we're not a little higher. It would help out probably when it comes down to selling a home, you know, that you were a little higher. But jobs are another thing. People hurting for jobs for their teenage kids in town, and we get a little older, some people, older people will be looking for jobs. There was an article in the paper, I think it was Friday, talking about despair among white people being in despair because of different things, to include not being able to find work. And it was even picked up by Dunesbury. And Dunesbury is kind of making fun of the situation because it did mention black people and said, and the black guy in the comic strip said, "Well, it just goes with the, goes with the status." And if we look at Newark and all these places, a lot of people are losing their property. They're getting auctioned, their properties are being auctioned off, okay? And a lot more than I ever noticed in the past, Newark and these places like Patterson. So they're feeling a lot more than white people, I think, you know, so, and people who are Hispanics and black people feel it more. Those are here already, so we're not taking the care of the people here now, and these people kind of resent that, and I don't blame them. So, anyway, that's what I have to say, sir.
Thank you very much, John. And once again, to reinforce, if there's any ever concerns about quality of life, such as stacking or anything that seems out of ordinary, please report it. We need to enforce our housing regulations and it is very important, and this does not change that. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please step forward.
Terry Romano, West Lane, Madison. Just to kind of sum up, Attorney General Jeff Sessions today said on the news that local policies of noncooperation with immigrant authorities are dangerous and will cost communities federal funding. How that affects Madison, I don't know, but if we are a welcoming community and saying we've become a sanctuary city and immigrants come in, federal funding is...
we've become a sanctuary city and immigrants come in, federal funding is what we're going to need to support different problems that may arise in the school system. And if we go against what the government is saying, we're not going to get federal funding. And I think that's dangerous, and I think we need to really revisit this welcoming community. I've lived in Madison for 25 years. I don't ever remember it being non-welcoming.
Thank you, Terry. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Yes, sir.
Hi, Mrs. Elias, 40 Green Village Road. I just would like to say that I hope when we all get together next week to talk about the welcoming resolution, that we are all going to be respectful listeners of each other, because everybody is an individual human being and deserves respect and to listen to each other. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, that will be reinforced as we, so important we hear opinions from everyone and have to be respectful in the process. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
An ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for Wednesday, April 12, 2017. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 13, 2017, ordinance of the borough of Madison amending Chapter 190 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Water to update the water connection fee schedule.
Mayor, I move ordinance 13-2017.
I second the ordinance.
And before council discussion, just for everyone in the audience, this is a regular update of a fee that is only paid by developers, not by the residents, and this helps offset the costs that many of our residents have already paid over the years. For example, there's a, if there's a single lot, the house is subdivided, they put a second house on the lot. One house doesn't pay the fee because they're already connected to the water system. The second house pays the fee because they're now to the water system, and they're helping pay for the maintenance of the pipes and the wells, the pumps, and everything else related to the utility. Any other council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Ordinance 14, 2017, ordinance of the borough of Madison amending Chapter 155 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Sewer to update the sewer connection schedule.
Mayor, I move ordinance 14-2017.
I second the ordinance.
And this is the same as before. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolution R.110-2017 through R.120-2017.
Second.
Any council discussion or any items that need to be pulled? Roll call vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes, but I abstain from R.117.
R.117, okay. Ms. Bailey?
Yes, but I abstain from R.119.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business? Approval of vouchers?
Our current fund, $3,560,196.41. The general capital fund, $840. Electric operating fund, $227,751.59. Electric capital fund, $22,288.14. Order operating fund, $31,739.65. And the trust, $8,004.05. The total is $3,850,819.84.
Mayor, I move the approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I'd like to make the following appointment, not requiring council consent. This is Janet Foster, regular Class A, for four-year unexpired term of Van Risen through the December 31, 2018. And...
Mayor, I move, we adjourn.
Thank you all.